You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 22nd, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Council and Regional Sewer District Joint Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
We're going to get ready to start. It is 5:18 PM. This is the LaPorte County Council notice of joint workshop with the Regional Sewer Board. And so I'm just going to ask for a quick roll call so that this way we can start the meeting.
Okay, for the Regional Sewer Board Board members, we have Amanda Laners, Mitch Bishop. Do I have the right list? Okay, thank you. Marcella Kunstek? Thank you. John Carr, Mark Danielson, Jerry Jackson, Dahlia Zygus, and Councilman Rosenbaum.
Here.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Here.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Jagalski. And Councilman Cunningham.
Okay. Since uh...
Seven, seven present.
Thank you. So since you were the, you were asked to have this meeting, so we're going to ask you to come up and, and speak.
So I'm not a trustee of the Regional Sewage District, but we, our firm has been working with the district for...
Could you just state who you are?
Sorry, Kent Jones, and I'm CEO of Jones Petry Ruffensky. We're an engineering firm out of South Bend. We've been working with the, with the community off and on since 2013. This project out at the Hudson Sawgney Lake Community. Part of that is in Hudson Township, the other is in Kalina Township. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about where we are with the project, kind of give you a, a kind of a brief tutorial. This is my high-tech handout. We're not doing any electronics today, so I wasn't sure what we were going to be able to do. So I gave you a little bit of an agenda. We can follow loosely along with that. If you haven't had any familiarity or experience with the Regional Sewage District, you may have duty or duties relative to appointments that you're required to make to that board. Their mission is, is pretty simple. They're, they're responsible for the development of rural utility systems in the unincorporated areas of the county. Their primary goal is the protection of health, human welfare, and the environment through that work. And they concentrate on delivering services using all available resources. They like to do that reliably, efficiently, and cost-effectively. Their adopted mission statement is on page two there. They actually now have two purposes in their, in their official purpose of the district. But in, when the, when this mission statement was adopted, they only were taking care of sewage in the county. They now do have the ability and already do operate at least one water system. So their stated mission is to enhance the quality of life in LaPorte County, protect its waterways, rivers, while providing management of sewage in an environmentally friendly manner. And I can tell you that I've been working with the, with the, with the district since the second phase of Rolling Prairie kicked off. And I feel like, like you couldn't have a better group of dedicated individuals that are serving on that board of trustees. So they are responsible, under any circumstance, in any county where a Regional Sewage District exists, to react to critical needs in the unincorporated community, deliver the most cost-effective solutions, which we are partly here to talk to you about tonight. One of the primary focuses that gets lost a little bit relative to their mission is they are, they are also engaged in the preservation and sustainability of the housing stock in the unincorporated areas, and especially in some of those areas that have significant, significant needs for utilities that you would enjoy if you were in the city of, of Michigan City or here in LaPorte, that you just don't have in the county. Another thing that is probably not understood necessarily about what the Regional Sewage District can take or help with is redevelopment, economic development in the unincorporated areas as well. They could partner with the county council or the county commissioners to take on roles that would allow the development of essential services when you are remote from a municipal boundary where you would find services. And, and they're also significantly engaged in the, in planning and enabling transitional and generational infrastructure investments. If you think about the history of sewer and water utilities in LaPorte County, almost every community already took care of that 50, 60, 70 years ago. Well, there are still areas that have very densely developed populations that do not have access to those utilities. And that's where the Regional Sewage District comes into play and was the original reason for the development of the, of the administrative code that allowed the district to be formed with your help and for them to conduct this essential and critical business. So on this page is a graphic showing the, the limits of the project that we're talking about. This would be all of that area surrounding, the residential area surrounding the Hudson Lake and then all of that area surrounding Sawgney Lake. In both scenarios, there has been a significant movement on behalf of the property owners to advance this project. Like I said, I started working with them in 2013, actually working directly for the property owners. And, and they in turn, over time, were able to bring the project forward with enough support to ask the Board of Trustees at the Regional Sewage District to take the project on as an official project and try to advance it to design and funding and then eventually construction. And that is where we currently are. We are, we are actually moving the project forward. So a little bit about community facts. So in this area, the service area in those two lake communities, there's about 3,000 persons living there, about 1,113 homes and businesses. The majority of the home sites are on, are on, are sites that are less than a county standard within which you would be allowed to own and operate a private septic system. Most of those home sites are smaller. As a matter of fact, about 72% of the home sites at Hudson Lake and 67% of the home sites at Sawgney Lake are below that 24,000 square foot threshold. And then it, we did, we did another count, just for curiosity's sake. We're finding at least 30% of that, of that 70 and 67% are actually below 10,000 square feet. And if you're familiar with the community, you've ever driven through it, you'll know what I'm talking about, where we have houses that are almost taking up every square inch of the lot, the tax parcel within which they are built. So that creates a significant problem for the homeowner, homeowner and the environment and for their neighbors because they really don't have enough room to do all of the things that are required to do by law. So in those cases, most home sites would not support the permitting of a septic system that would comply with local standard or the state standard, either one. One of the other things that we found unusual, well, unusual in some cases, but not, not in some. Here in, in this particular community, when we first started working with the Health Department, we were only able to identify about 100 systems that were actually documented, which meant that most of the systems are predating the county's practice of keeping records on the issuance of permits for those constructions. Now that 100 may have changed by now because, like I said, when I initially did that research, that was 13 years ago. My guess is in that time, the Health Department has been able to go out and help property owners through that difficult question. And, and that is one of the things that is very good about most health departments, especially here in, in LaPorte County, where the, the health officials understand that even though the property owner is 100% obligated on his own to handle all of the wastewater generated within their domicile, in a lot of cases, they can't do it completely. And so the Health Department helps them to find creative ways to do that. Sometimes it's a holding tank. Sometimes it's trying to put up a minor repair on a system to help it function just a little bit longer. But again, one of the problems that we have here is a complacency issue, not only with local standard, but with state standard as well. The average home age in the community, in both communities is around 56 years. Some are a lot older, some of our, some of our newer. The typical documented system we found from a, from our permit research showed that even the ones that were permitted were, on the average, 20 years old. The life expectancy for most septic systems are between 20 and 25 years before they need to be replaced in some way. At least a component at least needs to be replaced. We found that the soil conditions, 55% of the total landmass within this service area is, are not, that, that soil is not compatible with the long-term operation of onsite septic systems. Back when this area was developed, if you, and you're from LaPorte County, I'm not, but so you know what the history of the Hudson Sawgney Lake area is. That was a resort community that was developed to serve families out of Illinois and Chicago. And those were mostly fishing shacks and they did, they, they used them, they developed the minimum they had to to be able to have that vacation place out, you know, away from the city. And so, and that is reflected in some of the home, home conditions, you know, little houses that have been remodeled over and over again. But they didn't really necessarily care about soil conditions at that time. It was, they, a lot of them were developed with privies. And then over time, some type of a septic system was probably built. But they didn't really pay attention to the soil conditions that we're required to pay attention to today, to today. So that means coupled with the less than standard size of the average home site and piling on top of that, the unsuitable soil conditions, the high water tables. If you've driven down some of the streets, you're looking at the lake and looking at the lot next to it and you can make your own conclusions there. But, so those conditions really just don't measure up to a good sustainable scenario. So, and that is what, exactly what the local Health Department is telling us, and that's exactly what the State Health Department is telling us, is this is not a sustainable condition. It's time for the community to change this and, and look forward to the future, solve this problem permanently. And there's really only one way we can do that, and it's to do like a lot of the other communities did here in LaPorte County years and years ago, where they developed a wastewater system that treats the wastewater, returns it back to the environment and near drinking water, in a near drinking water standard. So right now, in the community, they're drawing about 280,000 gallons of water a day from individual water wells, side by side, next to septic systems throughout the community, and then putting back into the same aqua for about 234,000 gallons of wastewater daily. And of course, that varies depending on how many people are home and how many people are in for vacation and, and that kind of a thing. So, and I'm giving you this background because, because you know, this is on the tail end of this. We're going to ask for partnership and I want you to understand is everything that we understand and everything that the homeowners and the group that supports it understands, and especially what the county or what the Regional Sewage District trustees have come to know. So if the project goes forward, there will be some definite benefits. From an environmental standpoint, the risk of exposure to human wastewater will be mitigated. Where we're going to take that, that, that wastewater and remove it from the community, treat it to the highest standard we can, and discharge it back into the environment at near drinking water standard. And so that is removing all of the contaminants and constituents that exist. There are some that we can't remove. You might know a little bit about those. Those are what we call the forever chemicals that we haven't figured out how to treat yet in our business, but we'll get there. The impacts of the surface water resource will be eliminated, at least from the human encroachment. Human encroachment meaning septic systems built within the riparian, near riparian areas and within the water table that is also the same water table that feeds the lake. Permanent solution for wastewater collection is treatment will be the outcome. We will absolutely eliminate about 1,100, maybe close to 1,113 onsite septic systems. Those will be permanently removed from service. The septic tanks themselves will be pumped and the, and the tank backfilled so it can never be used onsite again. And, and as that's happening, the new, the homeowners will be connecting to the new sewer. From a property owner's standpoint, they'll gain some flexibility in the use of their ground. Right now, they don't have that. In an average site, in any home site, you have to make room for your house, your garage, your sidewalks, your deck, your outbuildings, your kids' play area, plus the septic system, plus the well. And in the, in the case of the well, there's a 100-foot diameter circle, 50-foot radius that has to be drawn from the center of the middle of that well. And anywhere within that circle, you cannot build a septic system. Your neighbor can't do that. You can't do that when you're in that proximity to your neighbor's well and vice versa. So they do gain the flexibility. And in most cases, if they needed to, they could actually replace their well. Right now, that would be a struggle in permitting because trying to find a location where you can get that 50-foot radius, 100-foot diameter is going to be difficult. Elimination of the potential for cross-connection. We know that's happening. It's, 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 the conditions are right for it. We, we know that it is common in scenarios like we see here for a preferential pathway to develop over time between a septic system and a well, whether that's your neighbor's well or your well or whatever. We know that's occurring. And we understand, and you will understand, and I'm certainly, I'm certain that the trustees and the residents will understand that this is definitely a generational decision. This is a big move for anyone and it's expensive. But it is transformational in the community and it'll change things. So it changes things in the way that homes are planned. It's changed, it changes things in the way investments are made in new homes or existing homes where remodeling happens. We see it in every project where once the sewer is built, people start to feel comfortable. Yes, I can, I can definitely now invest in this property and not worry about the Fourth of July when I have 20 people at my house and it rained the night before. And if you, if you lived at Hudson Lake, you'd know what I mean by that. But it is a, it's a worry always. One of the things that we also wanted to make sure that you understood because you are the fiscal body here in the county and we want to make sure that you understand that there are some definitive economic impacts that occur that, that march along with a project like this. We did some research with the Congressional Research Center, the United States Conference of Mayors, U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis, and the National Association of Home Builders to try to get a fix for, because I, I think you deserve to have this information. We certainly want to make sure that you have the information. So based on the value of this project, which right now is right, the current estimate is $43 million, which is a big number for any community in any county, and it's a big number. But based on the value of that project, if it does bid in that range, according to the, the, the financial estimates that come from these people that are way smarter than I am, they believe that there will be 911 direct jobs created and being impacted by this $43 million investment. Indirect jobs are even more significant, and those are the ones that are not related to the project, which means they're not a supplier, not a, not a vendor, not a shovel or, or a machine operator. But these are all of the, the positions in the, in the community that will be driven by that financial stimulus. Again, it is around $43 million that'll filter its way through those jobs and, and, and actually grow as it, as it makes its way back to the local economy. We know that wastewater projects spend out about 54% of their impact in the first three years, and it takes about five years for them to completely spend out their budget or their value. So about five years later, that stimulus will start to taper off. But some of those, some of that impact will remain and become permanent. Indirect impact, which the, the, the folks at U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis tell us occurs in every infrastructure project. Federal Highway Administration agrees with this. It seems, it seems abstract to me, but, but the numbers appear to be supported from within. So one and a half times the project value is what they call the multiplier effect. And, and there's enough, there's enough folks out there that are looking at this analysis and saying, this is actually the way it happens, that we can count on it. So a $64 million impact based on that $43 million investment. The permanent infrastructure, one of the things that I think you should know about, you probably already know about, over in St. Joseph County adjacent to this community, on the opposite side of the county line, the county is investing millions in economic development over there. You've heard of this project. There's, there's even talk about a new Indiana toll road access point within that development. That's right next door to where this community is. In the planning of this project, we are looking at the potential for what happens if we, we build this utility and it goes in place and we have interest that pops across the county line into LaPorte County and they need an essential utility like a wastewater system. It'll be there. It's going to be right next door. And, and so does that, does that change the way someone might feel about it? That's true. I mean, we'd have to convert farmland. That's perfectly good farmland. But we also have a very significant rail line that goes through that very same area and a very significant state highway, U.S. highway that goes right through that same area. So in, in the world of economic development, that does mean something. So right now, what the district is doing to, they're doing their part, doing everything they can to get a handle on how this project is funded. So they've asked us to value engineer every single aspect of the project. We're currently turning, turning this thing upside down, making sure that every dollar is well spent. We are negotiating with both of the state and federal level funding resources. That's the Indiana Finance Authority through the State Revolving Loan Fund and the United States Department of Agriculture through their Rural Development Program. And we've been having continuous dialogue from, with them. We've probably been, from JPR's viewpoint, we've been keeping them updated about, on this project for at least 10 years because we knew eventually what's going to happen. But more recently, those, that dialogue has ramped up to teams meetings directly with board members and all their, with their financial advisor, with their legal counsel, with their engineers, all trying to understand exactly how this project is going to go forward and how it's going to be funded. We are structuring the project in its implementation stage to maximize the subsidization from those two resources. So the goal there is to set the project up so that we might be able to get more than a few years, maybe three, up to three years of subsidization from one or the other of those entities. USDA is telling us, because of the median household income, we're probably not looking at grant, not, not through the normal channels, through the state director. But there could be some opportunity for federal level funds that come back from Washington DC to LaPorte County if we, if we're loud enough and if we're aggressive enough on pursuing those funds, which we certainly will be. We are also preparing a submittal for the, the upcoming Ready Point 2.0, which we think will be open sometime the first part of July. This is a perfect project for that program because of how, what its reach is and what it does with the community and the fact that there are multiple other funding opportunities that we're trying to bring to bear. And then we're also kind of innovatively, we've been, we've been, it's been suggested that we contact the U.S. Economic Development Administration to talk about the potential for support for the wastewater facility that we are significantly upgrading. By the way, that wastewater facility currently exists. It's at the Indiana Toll Road Travel Plaza at LaPorte. And we are going to be about tripling its capacity and making room for further expansion if, if it's needed. So USCDA might be a good choice there. So we're going to do everything we can to bring all of these resources to bear. So the request for partnership to LaPorte County is, 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 is needed. And we, 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 our firm spends a lot of time in their rural utility development business, working for multiple counties, for multiple U.S., multiple regional sewage districts. And, and some of the largest ones that we deal with have entered into partnerships with their county council and county commissioners relative to leveraging funds to get more attention from the typical resources. About three months ago, we, we were able to garner $1.3 million from LaGrange County Commissioners and Council to help close the gap on an important project at the Twin Lakes Service Area. The folks in Alcart County are spending a significant, significant amount of ARPA funds to develop a project that would not have gone forward without their help. We are beginning work with the Marshall County Regional Sewage District, actually just starting to meet with their new district. And that group of county commissioners has dedicated funds from their ARPA to help support the upstart and initiation of that district. It's, it's not unusual for, for those funds to be applied to a worthy project like this is what the point I'm trying to make. So the project stands at 43 million. It's up 26% from 2021 when we filed the application for funding. And we have watched several projects land at that, at that increased number. And of course, a lot of that has to do with the unprecedented, unprecedented inflation that we saw, but also all of the other things that are being attached to infrastructure projects right now. And we're finding that infrastructure has outpaced that 8, 9% that we were, that were the rest of us were seeing at the grocery store. And that has everything to do with multiple things. Cost of fuel is a big, is a big thing. Everything that we use to build these projects is run by diesel fuel. The federal government enacted a new program, Buy American, Build American. That is a, although we love that idea, it's impacting the cost in a dramatic way because a lot of the pieces and parts, electronic equipment, some pump manufacturers that were the majority of that, those components are not made in the U.S. So what's going to happen is we're going to have to find and source a more expensive product, but that's the way that works. But that is having a big impact. And then of course, the worldwide shortage of materials and construction due to COVID-19. So the ask is, right now, I've been authorized by the trustees to offer this number. You can take my hat off if you want. That's okay because I'm getting paid. And, but 1.5 million would help us, and that'll help us in leveraging. One of the things that, that the folks at the State Revolving Loan Fund look hard at is what are they doing locally to help enable this project? Is the, is the county allocating anything from their ARPA, their ARPA funds? So, so approval of this grant does help us leverage additional funds, puts us in a better position to negotiate. We will score higher in the ready program. We'll demonstrate the importance of being proactive in planning and that, that, that challenge extends to the council and the commissioners as well as the trustees. It'll help us demonstrate buy-in to EDA if we're going to hope to attract favorable funding from them. And it'll help to activate probably the more, one of the more important things that I would consider anyway. One of the most significant infrastructure projects built in unincorporated LaPorte County probably in history, beyond a roadway or a bridge. So it's, it's rare even when a, when a city is, is able to advance a $43 million infrastructure project. So that's my spiel, and I'm glad to answer any questions if you have time. So.
Thank you very much for the presentation and being mindful of our limited time before the next meeting starts. I got a couple of questions for you. One, I'm looking at the, this map here of the proposed conservancy districts. Is there any particular reason you guys didn't design a, a plan to go to New Carlisle instead of going to the toll road treatment facility?
There is a very particular reason. As a matter of fact, as a part of our funding procurement, we knew that the State Revolving Loan Fund folks and USDA would ask that very question. So we made it an official approach. The problem is, is that we're not approaching the city of New Carlisle, the town of New Carlisle because they don't own the collection system that is connected to the city of South Bend. So we went directly to the city of South Bend and the answer was no.
Interesting.
So we, we, we anticipated that and...
How many septic are currently non-functioning or non-compliant?
I don't know the answer to that. And it would be very difficult to get the answer to that. So.
The funding and repayment mechanism that you guys are looking at for this, so what do you have in mind?
The, well, we're... The, well, we're hoping for a grant from you.
Yeah.
The rest, from USDA, that'll be a forty-year term. The interest rate right now, sadly, is at three-point-seven percent, because we are not, we are in the market-rate demographic category in these two townships. That wasn't that way thirteen years ago when we first, or back in two thousand and thirteen when we first started looking at this project. They were in the median level, but over time, obviously, they're making more money out there now. So, and then through the State Revolving Loan Fund program, we are, we are negotiating and hoping for grant from them. They typically allocate about five million a year to projects, individual projects. We're hoping to get that over three years. The project's going to take three years to construct at least, and that term of that loan will be thirty-five years for pipe and twenty years for anything else. And so we're watching that, the terms and conditions pretty closely.
Presumably, you're looking at monthly bills and then also maybe a property tax assessment, or is that not on the table?
No, the Regional Sewage District model in the state of Indiana does not allow a property tax assessment. They will only be able to support the project by rates and charges.
Okay, thank you. And then have you guys done calculations on what the difference will be, whether you guys get subsidization from the county? What would be the impact to people's monthly bill?
I don't have that information with me tonight, but there would be, you know, any, anything helps, believe me, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Novak, you had your hands up.
Yeah, real quickly, does, does the one-point-five need to be paid all at once, or is this a commitment over a period of time?
It really depends on, on the agreement between the county and the Regional Sewage District. It could be something that, like, they spend your money last, or they spend it in increments where they ask you for, they file a claim for a specific component of the project, and we only take that money down when it's needed. Of course, you know, they, they already have in place temporary funding to advance the project to bid, and so we would not, we would probably, even if we were going to ask it, ask for you to transfer a hundred percent of it, it wouldn't be until two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I came just a few minutes late. What was your name? I'm sorry.
Ken Jones.
Mr. Jones, a lot of this information is available. You said that we haven't done this project. We actually did Rowan Prairie. I, I'm not against the project itself, but those, those questions you answered, you asked and answered were, were not even viable to, we didn't come close to that. We got less than one-tenth of the people signed up for the actual, we didn't, our, our money that we loaned, the two million dollars, I believe it was, fifteen years ago, we got less than one-fifth of that money back. One of the bigger problems I have going out in your area, because I have been through that, is that what do we do with the roads that aren't the roads? The property is not the property. People are sitting on top of each other's property. There's, there's access roads, but there's not actual roads going to the homes. We, we get problems with snow plowing every year. We get problems, and I've gone through some battles with neighbors out there. That in itself, to put that in, is going to be a huge legal problem in its own self. This is a little different than other areas, like you said, because they built on a little postage stamp thing. This was supposed to be a fishing village, a fishing cottage or whatever you want to say. I think it's a cottage, but which became a home, which became a duplex, which became all the above. But then all of a sudden, they encroached onto the people's property, and there weren't no, again, there was no county roads that were even accessible to that, to those areas. I believe we should take this into total consideration of looking what our, our loan was to Rowan Prairie, and we did not, we did not see the development, we did not see the economic development. Do I think it's needed to be done? Yes, that, that's another conversation. But everything you asked, we already, we've been through. This isn't the biggest project that we've done. So I think that we need to look at this thing really, really careful and look at how our payback did not happen in the county. Thank you. Oh, yeah, one more question. You said, I, I'm sorry, you're real quick, which strikes me as unusual, unless South Bend is just over-tapped water and sewer-wise, because Michigan City has expanded up into Buffalo, expanded to Beverly Shores. They didn't want to cross lines or, or just because they don't have the capacity?
They didn't give me that answer.
Could you ask that question, please? Because that's, that's surprisingly, because how a water and sewer makes their money is by more people hooking up to water and sewer.
The, I, I don't know if it helps you or not, but the, the pipeline that was extended out to that area was originally for the steel mill.
Yeah, no.
And, and a lot of the capacity that pipe has been taken up by the steel mill, but a partial portion of it is being used to serve the town of New Carlisle. The balance is, my understanding, and, and again, they didn't give me this answer specifically. What I can surmise is that they have plans for that capacity. They're, the project that they're talking about, the development area they're talking about is six or seven thousand acres. And my guess is that they're guarding that for that purpose.
Okay. So my last question would be to get to this, is that if you look at this situation, and I know you're an engineer, so you can tell this very well, you just don't pick one person down a road and say, okay, he's going to hook up, because something's got to flow. Something has to cause the flow to happen. There has to be numerous areas. I could take you to Michigan City where they've taken blocks, sorry, where they've taken blocks down, and there's not enough flow in, in an area of that size of even Michigan City. You have to have that capacity to allow it. So if you don't have that many people hook up, you have problems with that also. This is a huge more problem than just the fact that we have issues with contamination. And people are fighting continuously. We just did a project on, over there on nine-fifty, and nobody wants to hook up to it. Now, the, the rule is, if it ever fails, then they have to, but only if it fails.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe I can help you with that.
Okay.
Currently, I mean, there, there, there's always some changes in, in the code happening in the administrative code relative to septic systems. And also the, the, I would say, every couple of years, there are, you know, the legislature's also looking at the code that governs the operation of regional sewage districts. Regional sewage districts are, are, have the ability to build projects and compel connection within their jurisdiction, and that is routine.
Can you sell me the compel part? Because I, we've, we've studied the heck out of that, and there is no, right now, there's no current law to compel. Only law says that if you fail system, you must hook up.
That would be, that would be under the health code, but not, not necessarily the code that governs the operation of regional sewage.
We tried to help code in LaPorte County for Rowan Prairie. It did not apply.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what, to help me on that law, because.
Yeah. If the area that you're talking about is not within the regional sewage district or isn't under the jurisdiction.
It is.
So where is this?
Rowan Prairie.
Rowan Prairie?
Mm-hmm.
They are being compelled to connect.
Only when they fail a system.
No. They are being a hundred percent compelled to connect.
We got to find out where our money is at, because if those, all those compelled people, which we have not seen, we have not received our money back on it.
Yeah, they're, that, that is currently underway, if not almost complete.
And this is.
Almost complete. We have a hundred percent.
If I could say something, Councilman Nagelski. Phase one was when the, the loan was taken out from the county, and that is being paid every month. There's a payment being made.
Okay.
So I was not on board on phase one, so I can't really speak fluently on phase one, but phase two was compelled to hook up, and we have not had any issues. We were able to save money and have money left over, and we provided grants to the homeowners to help hook up of a thousand dollars each home. And then as far as this project, you know, my family's been a pioneer family in the Hudson Lake area since, since that community was formed. And my great-grandfather used to deliver milk around Hudson Lake. And if you, if you ever look at LaPorte's history, Hudson Lake used to be booming like a hundred years ago. There's pictures of big party boats floating on the lake, and, you know, there's been no improvements to that area in a hundred years, and look where we're at. That, it's just stagnant. And this project could pump so much life into that community and, you know, improve the water quality. I mean, this is a human right issue. I mean, as far as delivering quality water to people so that their septic tanks aren't leaking into the lake and down to the aquifer, and the next thing you know, you got contaminants, and it's just, this project is, is exactly what the infrastructure bill's for, you know, as far as projects like this. And I believe, Ken, wasn't this ranked like number one on the?
Yeah, the state, state of Indiana, this project, they considered it to be the, the most prioritized product, project in the state. They were, they were ranked number one, and they're still at number one going into two thousand and twenty-three. And, and so mostly because they, they understood that without that assistance, without, without the ability to bring parties together, it may never happen, and it's probably significantly passed.
It, it's two years in the works. I mean, we've been working on this for a long time. This is a big step. I mean, it's a, it's a huge project, but, you know, the impacts it could have for generations is, is, you know, is obvious, so.
To clarify, this is a mandatory connection project, correct? Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
I have one question. Under the project benefits, the very last line in the left column says, "For the same one hundred homes, assume four hundred and thirty-one direct and indirect positions." I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Yeah, so that, that data comes from the National Association of Home Builders. And so what we, what we want to assume and what we've seen happen, so this is a community of eleven hundred and thirteen equivalent dwelling units. So we can expect probably over the next four or five years, maybe a little bit longer, for there to be probably one hundred remodels or new home constructions that'll happen within that period of time. And this happens on every single project where we bring a new sewer utility to a previously unserved community, where homeowners can say, I don't got to worry about it now. I've got sewer, so I'm going to invest in my home. So if we assume that, I think on the low side, that every one of those a hundred remodels or new homes is going to be somewhere in the budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, every, that number, if you listen to the National Association of Home Builders, converts to a job, somewhere either by the, either somebody in the construction trade, the supply chain, the vendor, or otherwise. And using their math, that generates about four hundred and thirty-one positions.
Or jobs.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to close the workshop. We're going to go and take a five-minute recess, and we're going to begin a few minutes after six, about five after six. Thank you.